Good afternoon. I'd like to start by welcoming our stakeholders for tuning in to today's webcast. Our meeting will include reports from the FASB Chair, the GASB Chair, the FAF Executive Director and the FAF Treasurer. We will hear reports about the latest activities of the Financial Accounting Standards Advisory Council and the Governmental Accounting Standards Advisory Council. And we will also receive a report from the Trustees Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee. Before we begin this afternoon's meeting, however, I'd like to start by taking a moment to honor David Villa, a FAF Trustee who passed away over the President's Day weekend. David was a leader in the field of asset management and always provided thoughtful and insightful observations during our meetings. He was a dedicated public servant for the state of Wisconsin, focused on the financial health of the state's retirees. He also gave of his time to help low-income families thrive, working with the Marguerite Casey Foundation, understanding that families face poverty, not just because of one issue. His work to aid others honored his upbringing as a child of educators. David always encouraged others to keep learning and readily shared his wealth of financial knowledge. I'd like to ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence in honor of David. Thank you. Now I'd like to recognize our new members of the FAF Board of Trustees and welcome them to their first official meeting and acknowledge them for the important work that they will do during their terms. Tim Kristin, Chairman of the Board of Baker Tilly International, Lynette Kelly, former President and CEO of the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board, Rick Rysig, CEO for Anderson Zermulon Company and a former member of the Private Company Council, Sarah Smith, former Chief Compliance Officer and Chief Accounting Officer for Goldman Sachs, and Robin Washington, former Executive Vice President and Chief Financial Officer for Gilead Sciences Incorporated. We welcome all of you today and look forward to working with you in the years ahead. With that, I'd like to move into our regular agenda, and the first item of business is to approve the minutes from the Board's November 17th meeting. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? And the motion carries. Thank you very much. So our next item is a report from the Oversight Committee, and I have Eloise Foster and Tim Ryan reporting.
Thanks Kathleen. I'll go first and then turn it over to Eloise. Good afternoon, everybody. It's great to be with you all and thank you for the time. The Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee met last Friday on February 19th. We were very pleased to welcome the two of the trustees that Kathy mentioned, Robin Washington and Rick Rysig, who joined the committee as well, and we're happy to have them. The first topic we spent time on was our FASB update. That our first report was from Rich Jones, the Chair of the FASB. Many of the topics that Rich covered, he'll cover in a little while here, so it'll be included as updates, so I won't duplicate that. But I would like to mention, we did spend time with Rich and FASB Technical Director Hillary Salo, and they spent time describing the FASB's agenda-setting process and how they prioritize different items, and that was particularly helpful for our new committee members. We spent time talking about how items get on the agenda, and we also spent time with Rich transitioning into the chair, how the agenda is set with the new chair coming in. Rich also discussed with us ways that the FASB has been responding to changes and challenges in the current environment. And Hillary gave the quarterly update to all of us on the post-implementation review process with a focus on CECL, revenue recognition, and leasing. After that, we then moved to the PCC or Private Company Committee, and as they do each time we meet, they gave us an update on their quarterly meeting. Sue Cosper, who is the FASB liaison to the PCC, and Rich Jones provided their perspectives on the December Private Company Council. One of our new committee members, Rick Rysig, he shared his comments, given that previously, before becoming a trustee, he was a member of the PCC, and it was a very unique perspective to get it from one side, and then now as a trustee as well, and that perspective was very helpful to all of the trustees as well. And Eloise, with that, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Tim, and good afternoon. During last Friday's report to the committee, the GASB Chair Joel Black highlighted the progress that GASB has made on its agenda projects in the past quarter, and he described the significant efforts that GASB has devoted to its COVID-19 response. Joel also talked about a recent meeting of the Tribal Government Working Group, where the results of their user outreach was discussed. In his last meeting with the Commission, David Bean spent some time explaining the process the GASB follows to add a project to its technical agenda, particularly where the process differs from the FASB. David also provided an update on the GASB's post-implementation review activities. He pointed out that six of its standards are now under review, and two of those reviews are in the second stage of the three-stage project. Alan Skelton, who is the incoming GASB Director of Research and Technical Activities, he joined the GASB organization last week, and he participated in his first Oversight Committee meeting last Friday. Now, as a part of our oversight responsibilities, we encourage trustees to observe at least one advisory group or one FASB or GASB meeting annually. At each committee meeting, we discuss the meetings that committee members have attended, and we take the opportunity in this forum to hear from other trustees who have observed a meeting. One of our new committee members, Shandon Thomas, observed the December FASAC meeting. Since he was not able to participate in last week's Oversight Committee meeting, we've asked him to share his observations on the FASAC meeting at this time. So Shandon, would you like to make a few remarks, please?
Yes, thank you very much. And again, as it was noted, I had the opportunity to observe the quarterly FASAC meeting that took place in December, on Tuesday, December 15th. There were a couple of key, I would say, primary topics for discussion during that meeting. Those included a discussion around financial reporting complexity, as well as a discussion around accounting for the standard application of principles in the current environment, particularly as it relates to COVID-19. Some of the subtopics, as you might imagine, included also, again, expanded discussion around disclosures related to COVID-19, more follow-up discussion on CECL disclosures, and then also standards related to sustainability, which obviously has been at the heart and center of a number of conversations that we had, and in particular in light of the recent IFRS Foundation's Consultation Paper on Sustainability Reporting. My observations were that it was particularly highly engaged discussion with all of the different participants. Ted Christensen did a really good job and was particularly adept facilitating the discussion. I would focus in on, just in wrapping up, I thought the discussion on complexity in particular was very timely. It's a relevant issue. The participants not only did a great job in sharing perspectives around it, but they really gave some concrete recommendations and suggestions. And so as a trustee, I felt the time was very well-served, spoke specifically to, and was very helpful in carrying out our role as trustee, so I was appreciative of the opportunity.
Well, thank you, Shandon. Madam Chair, that concludes the report of the Standard Setting Oversight Committee.
Thanks very much, Eloise and Tim. So we're now going to move to the reports from the FASB, the FASAC, the GASB, and the GASSAC. I'll look to Rich Jones. Rich?
Thanks, Kathy. It's my pleasure to report the activities of the FASB for the fourth quarter of 2020. I would like to start by once again thanking the trustees, my fellow board members, our staff, and most importantly, our stakeholders for helping us to fulfill our mission in this uncertain environment. I continue to be impressed by what we can accomplish when we work together. The fourth quarter was an active quarter at the FASB. We continued with our normal schedule of board meetings so that we were able to respond to emerging issues and set direction for our projects and public forums. We are continuously focused on the environment our stakeholders are operating in, and we will keep that in mind when doing outreach, when sending comment periods, and effective dates on our standards. We did issue four final standards this past quarter, and two additional standards were issued shortly after quarter end. We purposely accelerated the priority of standards that addressed emerging issues and challenges in the current environment, including standard setting to address reference rate reform and the effective date of our insurance standard. We also issued several proposed documents for public comment with varying comment periods, depending on the urgency and complexity of the issues. This included targeted improvements to our lease standard, private company accounting for interim goodwill-triggering events, accounting for revenue contracts acquired in a business combination. In addition, we also considered numerous agenda requests that we had received and added projects to our technical agenda, including disclosure of supplier finance programs and the aforementioned projects related to reference rate reform and private company accounting for goodwill. In addition, in the six-months ended 12/31, the Board had substantive deliberations on over 75% of the projects on our agenda. I also announced in December that the FASB would be undertaking an agenda consultation outreach process. This process will include outreach with advisory and key stakeholder groups to identify areas of financial reporting to consider for our agenda, followed by a public invitation to comment on those proposals. I am happy to report that our outreach efforts have already begun, and I've been once again impressed by our stakeholders' willingness to participate in our process. We will provide updates on this process as we progress. I would also like to provide a brief update on our post-implementation review process. The staff has previously provided the Board and the public a plan for the post-implementation review process for those standards currently under review. As Tim mentioned, those standards are revenue recognition, leases, and our current expected credit loss file. And that plan, the post-implementation review plan, is available on a special section of our website and is updated on a timely basis. We update this to provide transparency to our stakeholders to the actions that we are taking out. In addition, in December, our staff did a public reporting of input we'd received on the post-implementation review process for both leasing and CECL. And the summary of those board meetings is also available on our website. We will continue to update the trustees as we progress through this multi-year post-implementation review process. Beyond our post-implementation review in the fourth quarter, our outreach included numerous meetings with investors, preparers, international standard setters, academics, regulators, and practitioners. We also held a joint meeting with the IASB. I will tell you that with this outreach, coupled with the speeches and presentations that our staff met, we were able to reach thousands of our stakeholders in the fourth quarter. So with that, that concludes my report for the fourth quarter, and happy to take any questions, Kathy.
Thanks, Rich. Do we have any questions for Rich? I see Mike Rawlings and then Mary Barth. Mike?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Kathy. Rich, you mentioned you had some conversations with stakeholders, specifically the IASB in November, and you had a number of items on the agenda there, including goodwill and intangibles. Can you give us a little bit more detail on the agenda there and perhaps any further thoughts on meetings and collaboration to 2021?
Sure. And so our staff regularly meets with the staff at the IASB, and we have regular discussions amongst board members between the FASB and the IASB. In our joint meeting, we covered a number of topics, including response to the current environment, issues emerging in the current economic crisis, as well as both of our projects related to goodwill and potential amortization of goodwill. So Mike, it's a great sharing of information. That was a public board meeting, and we have a summary of that or a tape of that board meeting is also available.
Mary?
Rich, my question is related to Mike's. In your report on international activities, in addition to meeting with the IASB, you mentioned meetings with national standard setters in countries that have already adopted IFRS, such as Canada. Can you elaborate a bit on the purpose of those meetings and how they inform your decision-making process?
Sure. Thanks, Mary. And, you know, there are numerous country standard setters, Canada being one of them. We also meet frequently, in addition to Canada, with Japan, with representatives from Germany, the UK. And it is very informative to us to understand the issues that they're dealing with and their perspectives on standards as we're considering. So I would describe it as another forum for us to share perspectives among standard setters beyond the IASB.
Are there any other questions for Rich on his report? If not, thanks very much, Rich. We're now going to look to Mike Murrow to report on the activities of the FASAC. Mike?
Thank you and good day, everyone. My report can be found on Master Page 127 in your materials. That report includes activities through the end of December. And my report today, I'll highlight some recent and upcoming activities. I thought Shandon did a great job of summarizing the December meeting. I'll try to fill in a little additional information about that. The main topic was unnecessary complexity. During that session, FASAC members discussed complexity, including different expectations between the level of precision in applying GAAP from the perspective of preparers and practitioners, and the level of complexity produced in the financial statements, the views of investors and other users. Overall, the council members had varying views on complexity. For investors and other users, they indicated complexity occurs when there's a high volume of information, particularly when there are challenges in distinguishing between useful and boilerplate information. They highlighted the importance of the precision of cash flows as compared to other areas that are complex to preparers, such as pension and accounting. And they indicated an interest in key assumptions and changes in assumptions when developing estimates. For preparers and practitioners, they indicated complexity occurs when an accounting standard requires information that differs from the information that's used by management in running the business on a day-to-day basis or involves a significant amount of judgment or requires changing in existing technology platforms to accumulate information. Some council members also noted that complexity has significantly increased over time, along with economic changes, new business models. However, that complexity is not necessarily related to financial reporting. A high level of recent change in major accounting standards has created increased perceived complexity. However, change does not necessarily equate to complexity in and of itself in the views of many on the FASAC. And the Board's recent efforts to reduce complexity, such as providing practical expedience, has been appreciated. There were some specific suggestions, as Shandon mentioned, in terms of how FASB could minimize unnecessary complexity, including continuing to work closely with investors and other users to understand how information is used by them, continue to develop and write standards that are easily understood by all stakeholders, and perform more field testing prior to the finalization of a standard. So Shandon did a great job of highlighting the ongoing discussions about the impact of the pandemic on current accounting. I think the key takeaway from my perspective was there was a general consensus that the current accounting framework is effective in dealing with virtually all of the pandemic-related issues. So I think that was certainly the consensus of the group. Moving forward to our future events, on March 8th, we have our next meeting, which will include an orientation for newly-appointed FASAC members, as well as our annual administrative session for all members, which includes a self-review of our operations and effectiveness. And then on our full FASAC meeting the next day, the 9th, the topics are going to be investments and non-financial assets, focusing on precious metals, commodities such as oil, digital assets, including cryptocurrency, art collections, et cetera. Purpose of the discussion is going to be to gain an understanding of how investors use information related to these investments and by the companies making those investments, and to consider whether the information is sufficient and the priority for any potential improvements. We also are going to have a session centering on Educating Council members in advance of our scheduled April 9th or April 1st, Lean-In Agenda Consultation, as Rich mentioned, he's going to be meeting with us to discuss the future agenda. Lean-In Sessions is additional ad hoc meeting, provide members an opportunity to share their views with FASB about potential future agenda topics and the prioritization of areas defined. And then the staff will use that in input and developing agenda consultation invitation to comment, which will be issued for public comment later this year. This quarter, we also met individually with each board member and the FASB Technical Director to discuss FASAC operations and potential meeting topics that helped to shape an outlook of potential future topics for 2021, which is on Master Page 132 in your materials. We welcome your input on these and any other topics that you think FASAC should consider in the future, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Trustees, have any questions for Mike? No? Thanks so much for your report, Mike. Our next speaker is Joel Black. Joel?
Thanks, Kathy, and good afternoon, or good morning, depending on where you are. Appreciate everybody being here and taking the time to give me the opportunity to talk about what the GASB did during our fourth quarter. Fourth quarter of 2020 was a productive quarter for the GASB on our big three projects. We made progress. The financial reporting model, which has an exposure draft out now. We held a series of two webinars, one in order to kind of educate people on the proposed document and encourage responses. One of the webinars was a two-hour webinar geared towards preparers and auditors. The other webinar was a one-hour one geared towards users. We had over 2,000 participants in those two webinars, plus we've had over 100 views of those webinars since they aired live. The Revenue and Expense Recognition Project, the second of our big three, which has a preliminary views document out. Also during the fourth quarter, we had a series of webinars. This one had a series of three one-hour webinars geared towards preparers and auditors, and then a one-hour webinar geared towards the users. These three webinars had over 3,000 participants, including 50% of those, almost 50%, who viewed three or more of the webinars, plus they have had over 400 views since they originally aired. So we're encouraged by that and look forward to those two projects having a lot of good input into them coming up in the next month or two or even three. The third of our big three, the concept statement for the disclosure framework, we continued deliberations on in the fourth quarter and look forward to issuing a final standard in the second quarter of this year. We provided the Oversight Committee with our due process documentation memo that goes into all the efforts we went through in our process on that, because it is a concept statement project. So that was provided to the Oversight Committee last week. We did continue significant efforts and devote resources to technical inquiries on COVID-19 responses, primarily related to the CARES Act and what we call CARES Act II, which came in late December. So that continued throughout the fourth quarter and continues into this quarter. On our practice issue projects, we did continue efforts on all of those. We issued one exposure draft during the fourth quarter, which was on the 2021 Implementation Guide update. So that is out for public comment, and actually, the comment period closed last week. Our post-implementation reviews, as Eloise mentioned, we have two overall projects, the Pension Standards and the Fair Value Standard, which the post-implementation reviews are in Stage Two. The others, OPEB, fiduciary activities and leases are all in Stage One, but we made progress on all of those during quarter four. On our practice issues, one project was added to our technical agenda in December of 2020 that related to the renaming of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. That document, the report, the acronym CAFR, when you say it as it is spelled out, it's come to our attention, is a highly offensive racial slur directed towards Black South Africans. As we are a part of a global community, our stakeholders are parts of a global community, we just don't want to be offensive like that, so we have undertaken a project to look at renaming that project. The Board tentatively has decided to move forward with renaming the document, the annual comprehensive financial report, just moving the words around to denote that there's not any changes to the substance of the report, just the report being renamed for this important purpose. That's a fast-track project. We hope to issue an exposure draft in April for that, and hopefully a final standard by the end of the year. Finally, as Eloise mentioned, we do have a new Director of Research and Technical Activities who did come on board a couple of weeks ago and will take over for Dave Bean effective April 1st, Alan Skelton. So the fourth quarter was a lot, had a lot of activity, including interviews that went into that significant process to find just the right person, and we're very excited to have Alan here with us today and to have him here as our new Director of Research Technical Activities in the future. So that's my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Thanks so much, Joel. I've got David and Mary Barth. David?
Chairman Black, thank you for that good report. I just wanted to ask you if you want to comment on the legacy of Dave Bean, the outgoing Technical Director for the GASB, the legendary David Bean.
Sure. It's, you know, I've done this a couple of times. It's really hard to put into words what he means to the GASB. He's been our technical or Director of Research Technical Activities for 30-plus years. He was, you know, here and responsible for over 90 standards or almost 90 standards of the GASB. We only have 97, so in large part, he has been and is the GASB. He's the heart of the GASB family. He does what he does with honor, integrity, grace, charm. He carries himself so well. Everybody loves Dave. You know, we're really going to miss Dave. We're excited about Alan, but we wish Dave well, and we know he's going to be a part of the GASB family forever. So, you know, he will be around, although he just will be in retirement and hopefully enjoying that.
A truly legendary leader. Thank you, Chairman.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, would it be appropriate for me to suggest a round of applause for Dave Bean?
I was going to make some remarks at the end.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
We can do it twice, if you'd like.
We can wait.
Okay. Mary?
Back to business, more business, not honoring David, which is a good idea. First of all, Joel, I'd want to congratulate you on the response and the participation in the webinars for the two of your three big three projects, and it seems like a really effective use of technology. And I was wondering whether you planned to do this now that you've had this experience and this response. You plan to do this for other projects, or is this just for these big three projects? And then next time you have another big three, you might do it again, or more generally?
I think the response has been very positive to it. We'll see kind of if it results in more or good and productive feedback and input into the process. But my expectation is I don't see why we wouldn't try to do these. Maybe they're shorter, maybe there's less of them, but do these. Plus, I think we're interested in exploring some other ideas of how to get outreach to people that aren't participating in our process or haven't in a while. So we're interested in using technology in other ways, but I certainly think the webinars seem to have been successful and is something that we would definitely continue to do, not just on these big projects.
Are there other questions or comments for Joel? If not, thanks so much for your report, Joel.
Thanks.
Our next report is from Robert Scott. Robert?
Thank you, Chair Casey, and good afternoon or good morning to all watching. My short, brief report starts as on Page 1, Master Page 144 of your materials. It's the shortest report probably in recent memory, primarily due to the timing of the meetings, of the council meetings versus the trustee meetings. The council last met in October, and we reported to you at your November meeting the results of that meeting. As a result, all we've been focused on in the last several months is administrative activities, primarily finalizing the appointments that the trustees approved of our nine new council members and preparing to welcome them on board. We are having an orientation for those newly appointed members, as well as anyone who was appointed last year next Thursday. And our next council meeting is occurring on April 6th. And again, we would welcome any participation via the, by the trustees at that meeting. Again, it will be virtual in nature and making it easy for you to do that. And then in concluding my brief remarks, I just wish to add the thanks on behalf of the GASAC to David Bean for his efforts over the 30-plus years and his collegial attitude and assisting myself, as well as the council, in providing the vital input of the stakeholders to the GASB's process. We appreciate Dave and his leadership of the staff. And we also welcome my now former Vice Chair, Alan Skelton, to his new role as GASB Director of Research and Technical Activities, and we look forward to working with him in that role. And that's my report, Madam Chair.
Thanks so much, Robert. Are there any questions or comments, Robert? If not, thanks, Robert. Our next report is from our FAF Executive Director, John Auchenclos. John?
Thanks, Kathy, and good day to everyone. At risk of piling on, I just wanted briefly to add my own thanks to Dave Bean and express my admiration for his incredible dedication to our organization. I'm going to report briefly on a few matters of importance to the foundation. With respect to the pandemic, we are continuing to operate principally in a remote working environment and with our offices open only to staff on a highly limited and strictly volunteer basis. And I'm afraid to say at this time, we still do not have a definitive timeframe when we will be able to open our offices again to visitors or to resume business travel. But we, like everyone else, are very hopeful that the upcoming availability- upcoming availability of vaccine is going to change our thinking. I do want to note our organization is remaining highly productive. And we believe that our staff, and particularly our standard-setting staff, have the tools they need to carry out their work virtually. And I also want to note, we've begun planning for our post-COVID future. And we're working to define the principles that will guide our future working policies and space requirements. Turning to another subject, I'm very happy to report on January 28th, the SEC issued an order finding that the FASB's annual 2021 Accounting Support Fee is consistent with Section 109 of Sarbanes-Oxley Act. We will shortly begin the process of working with the PCAOB to start collecting those fees. And we will also work with the FINRA to begin the process of collecting the accounting support fees for the GAZBID. For 2021, our accounting support fees for the FASB will be 31.4 million in total, which I'm happy to report is level with the same amount last year, zero percent increase. And 10.7 million for the GAZBID, which is a modest increase, primarily based on revised senior staffing needs. I'd like to note that our stakeholders do not pay 100% of recoverable expenses. The FAF voluntarily contributes substantially an amount from its own reserves, in part from its publication revenues to defray those expenses. There's an explanation on our website depicting the factors that affect our reserve funds and contribution to accounting support fees. I have previously reported on our ongoing Content Vision and Enablement, or CV and E, project, through which we are bringing our publication systems and our processes onto a modern and more robust platform. We are close to finalizing the second of three phases for this multi-year project. The current foundational phase includes completing the content, technology, and design work, as well as developing and structuring the implementation plan. The implementation is going to be the third phase of the project. We remain on track to begin that next quarter, and we expect to complete the project sometime in 2022. Finally, I'd like to mention our ongoing strategic planning process. As part of that process, we conducted stakeholder outreach that included a survey taken by over 700 stakeholders, as well as over 50 interviews with FASB, GAZBID, and FAF stakeholders. Based on what we've learned through the outreach, the Strategic Planning Task Force, which includes members of our Board of Trustees and management, has identified and prioritized our strategic opportunities. We've developed a working draft of our plan that includes goals and objectives. And I'm happy to report that our Board of Trustees discussed that draft plan earlier today. Our task force is going to reconvene next month, and our plan is to issue a draft of our strategic plan for public comment in the coming months and hope to have a plan finalized and issued by the summer of this year. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm concluding my reporting. Would be happy to take any questions.
Thanks so much, John. Questions or comments for John? No? Excellent. Thanks again, John. Our final report is from our Treasurer, Eloise Foster. Eloise?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon again. Today's report is an update on the FASB's financial status for the year ending December 31, 2020. The net assets of the FAF have grown by 6.4 million at the end of December 31, 2020, or 6.3 million more than what was budgeted. The 6.3 million in savings really represents the delayed onboarding of the GAZBID and FASB board chairs, vacant positions, and reduced travel and meeting expenses. The remaining chunk of the reduction in expenditures is due to less spending on our CVE project, which John just discussed. The capital CVE expenditures were a little more than half of what was budgeted, and the operating expenses were a little over one-third of the roughly $1.6 million that was budgeted. There were three vacant positions throughout the organization at 1231, 2020. All of those vacant positions were in the FASB shop. Overall, at the close of calendar year 2020, the FAF is in good shape and our financial position remains strong. And Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Eloise. So before we close today's meeting, I wanted to extend on behalf of the Board of Trustees our recognition of Dave Bean, who has served as the GAZBID Director of Research and Technical Activities for the last thirty years and who will be retiring in March of this year, as you heard earlier. Dave joined the GAZBID at its inception in 1984, having served as the last Director of the National Council on Governmental Accounting, the organization which spurred the creation of the GAZBID. As the Director of Research and Technical Activities, he led the GAZBID staff and provided oversight for the organization's research, technical, and administrative activities, among many other things. Dave leaves an extraordinary legacy through the significant impact and contributions he's made to the GAZBID, governmental accounting and financial reporting. And again, on behalf of the Board of Directors, want to thank you, Dave, for your extraordinary service. I have a round of applause for Dave. Lots of silent clapping. What I'd also like to do is, before asking Dave if he'd like to make some remarks, is see if there are any other trustees who'd like to make any comments. I know we had a chance to hear from some of you earlier, but if not, I'd like to see if Dave would like to make some departing remarks.
Well, Eloise, sorry.
Well, David, I'm just going to say, thank you for your years of service. I've really enjoyed working with you through the years, and I would just say the biggest loss is you are. There is so much institutional memory walking out of the door. I don't know how we're going to recover. But good luck with everything in your future endeavors. Just take a bow for a job well done. You will be missed.
Thank you.
So Dave, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Kathy, and thanks to each and every one of you. As many of you know, I bleed GAZBID blue. As a matter of fact, I even had to have a blood transfusion when we changed the color of GAZBID blue a few years ago. But you know, what's been accomplished during my tenure at the GAZBID, again, is solely the result of a tremendous staff, you know, a diligent board of highly competent individuals. And last but not least, a lot of dedicated stakeholders who have played a part of this process. Jeff Esser reminded me that without the support and patience of one person, and that is my wife, Carol, I would not be here today. So the applause should not go to me. It should go to our staff, our board, our stakeholders, and most importantly, my wife. So thank you very much for this honor and opportunity to work with you. And you're in good hands with Joel and with Alan, and I wish you nothing but the best in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. So this marks the end of the public session of today's FAF Board of Trustees meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that the next Board of Trustees meeting will be held on Wednesday, May the 19th. And I'd like to thank everyone who tuned in today and wish you all a wonderful day. Thank you.